Hello and welcome. Tuesday, February 11th, Common Council Meeting for Noblesville, Indiana. We start with our Pledge of Allegiance. We have some scouts here from Troop 107, Jenna and Shayla. Will you come forward and help us with our Pledge of Allegiance?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great job, scouts. Ms. Lee's roll call.
Mr. Air.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee's. Approval of minutes from the January 28th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, right hand. And 8-0 on the agenda. Thank you. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I don't have any up here. If you want to have a comment, there are comment cards just outside the doors. Please fill one of those out and give it to the clerk up here. Thank you. Council committee reports. I know we've got a few. Who wants to start? Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we had the Roads Committee meeting on February 7th. Will Hampton, Greg O'Connor, Ms. Wiles, and myself were present. Talked about a number of the different roads and projects coming up, but some of the ones I just wanted to highlight were Pleasant Street. We talked a little bit about it. If there are any resident questions, all of those can be gone to Ms. Kropsky so that they are all consistent information. We are in the process of the three contracts for street rehabilitation. All of the bids have been opened, so those should be going through very shortly. We talked a little bit about the Logan Street pedestrian bridge, and just so everyone knows, the colored lights have been adjusted now to minimize impact for vehicles on the bridge. That was something that was a concern, I know, when we first came out with that. And then the last thing is, we talked a little bit about the Kerrigan Road Bridge over Morris. Just so everyone knows, that is expected to start May 20th, or May of 2020, and there is going to be a full closure expected from June 2nd to August 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
The Finance Committee met February 6th. Mr. Davis, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Wiles, Mr. Smith were in attendance, along with a cast of thousands. We had several people at the meeting. A number of the items that we discussed are on the agenda this evening, so I will try to keep my comments brief so we can move forward. I will say that the items on the agenda came or come to you this evening with the recommendation from the Finance Committee. I guess items of particular note, we had some conversation about the emergency warning sirens that need to be replaced. There's five of those, and the conversation was had regarding funding and public safety communications lit and where this all sorts out, and Mr. Canet is going to look into that. We've had a little, he's had a little conversation with the folks at the county, but some of those things need to be sorted out. But the bottom line is, we're going to replace all five of those. So, and the funding is in the budget to do so. There's a number of different changes in here on just housekeeping items that need to be dealt with. The CD fund rate, that's on the agenda. So it was a lengthy meeting, but a lot of these things are already on the agenda, so I'll let Mr. Spalding and the OFA talk about some of the transfers and whatnot. And the claims come to us with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
The Noblesville Parks Board met February 5th. Mr. Schwartz and I were in attendance, in addition to the board members who represent there. A few things of note, the Parks is hiring a new recreation manager. He comes from Greenfield Parks for 15 years, and so he's the new recreation supervisor, or he was a recreation supervisor, is now the recreation manager. As Mr. O'Connor said, they, there were some topics that were discussed that are on tonight's agenda, one of which was the Friends of Central Pool, that will come up later. The board passed that unanimously. They also discussed the rail yard in Forest Park and the movements that they're going through to move that project forward. And the only other area of note that I saw from the minutes was that the board is considering a license agreement with the schools to put the Noblesville Schools logo on apparel there. So that will be sold in the pro shop.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I believe that's it for committee reports? Okay, thank you. And as Mr. O'Connor said, the claims do come with a favorable recommendation.
Move to approve those claims?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the claims, right hand, please. Thank you very much. Moving on to new ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 03-02-20 and ordinance regarding text amendments to ordinance number 49-08-16, the Saxony Corporate Campus Plan Development.
Motion introduce ordinance 03-02-20.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Yelton.
This is a request to adopt text amendments regarding age-restricted multifamily units to be placed in the Saxony Corporate Campus area. As most of you know, the Saxony Corporate Campus area contains approximately 280 acres and it is bounded by Bowden Road, Old 146th Street, 136th Street, and east of Bergen Boulevard. It actually totally surrounds the Hamilton Town Center. The original plan development was adopted back in 2002, and it established areas for commercial office flex uses, as well as typical office uses, industrial uses, commercial and retail uses. The proposed amendments would, again, permit age-restricted multifamily units in a specific area, in a C1 area sub-district, it's more specifically adjacent to Harold Parkway, Cabela Parkway, and it would be north of Duluth Trading Company. It also sets forth development standards, architectural standards, and signage standards. The, after the public hearing at the Plan Commission, it was sent forward to the council with a favorable recommendation for adoption.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Yelton. Are there any questions? Ms. Yelton.
President.
O'Connor.
Ms. Yelton, this applies directly to that sub-area only, right?
That is correct.
So any other changes would have to be brought forward to us for review?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance number 04-02-20 and ordinance authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to IC 5-13-9-5.7.
Motion introduce ordinance 04-02-20.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and the ordinance you have before you is actually, in effect, a renewal of an existing authorization that we have that was passed by a previous ordinance, and there's a requirement in state law regarding the investment of public funds that if an entity wants to have a little more flexibility than provided in the base state law to make certain investments that might yield higher rates of return, that a, an ordinance needs to be adopted by that body, and that ordinance can extend for a term of more than, no more than four years. And what this one does is, that last ordinance is expiring on March 1st. This extends that another four years, and what it essentially allows you to do is that under state law, the longest term of an investment that you can use is up to two years' duration, so like a CD with, you know, a 24-month maturity. What this allows you to do is invest in investment instruments with up to five years' duration. But even in that, you can only invest 25% of your portfolio in those longer-duration items, and so what this does is just renews that authority for another four years.
Has been introduced. Thank you. All right. Moving to council to consider ordinance number 05-02-20 and ordinance to reestablish the cumulative capital development fund tax rate and establishing a public hearing.
Motion introduce ordinance 05-02-20.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
All right. This is a totally different issue, but somewhat similar in concept. This is now become an annual process for the council, and again, certain requirements in state law regarding the cumulative capital development fund. If you want to keep your tax rate fixed at a certain level, which is five cents, then an action like this needs to be taken every year. We've done this now the last couple of years. I think this would be the third year that we do this, and that's what this ordinance does. It's, you know, beginning that process of saying, yes, we want to keep the cumulative capital development fund tax rate at five cents, which is what it currently is, so.
Any questions of Mr. Spalding on this?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance 05-02-20 on February 25th.
Second that.
Okay. So that means the public hearing is open, or it will be open on February 25th? Yeah. What'd you say?
Vote on it.
Yeah.
Oh, we have to vote on this, sorry. We do need a hand vote on this. All those in favor of establishing a public hearing for ordinance 05-02-20, please raise your right hand. Ares. Thank you. Council to consider ordinance number 06-02-20 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Park and Recreation Fund and establishing a public hearing.
Motion introduce ordinance 06-02-20.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
All right. Next ordinance is an additional appropriation, as you mentioned, and the additional appropriation is for the purpose of a public purpose grant from the city to an organization referred to as the Friends of Central Pool, and they have a plan for maintenance work at the Forest Park Aquatic Center, and we actually have a, one of the actual Friends of Central Pool here, Greg Connor. If you would like to, you know, get some comments from him about what their, what their intentions are, what this does is put the funding in place to address the plan that they've put together.
Yeah, I think we'd love to hear.
Yes, please.
Yeah, please. Can we let Ms. Wiles get settled in? Please state your name, your address.
Okay. My name is Greg Connor. I live at 5665 Kenyon Trail here in Noblesville. It's an honor to be here tonight, representing the Friends of Central Pool, and first, I'd like to thank you for all of your generous support over the past years in our organization. I think that we have one of the best partnerships between a nonprofit and a government agency anywhere in the country today, and I believe that because the group, the Friends of Central Pool, is made up of a group of individuals and family members that have a vested interest in the success of the Forest Park Aquatic Center. The Forest Park Aquatic Center is by far the greatest asset in terms of an outdoor swimming facility in the state of Indiana, if not the Midwest. We have a tremendous facility there. Over the past 10 to 15 years, there's been a lack of reinvestment in the facility, and that's what we're here to tonight, is to get the Forest Park Aquatic Center to get back on track and start the process of making sure that that facility is able to be sustained for the foreseeable future. Some of the projects that we've outlined are everything from upgrading the water slide to fixing leaking showers and toilets in the locker rooms, to also adding really important new and creative amenities that will draw even more visitors to our facility every single year, as well as help improve the experience of the thousands and thousands of Noblesville citizens that use this facility.
Any questions? I have, go ahead. Do you have one?
Not a question, really, just a comment. I'd really like to commend the Friends of Central Pool for their efforts and work to maintain the amenity that we have. Otherwise, it may not be there, but I would echo the partnership that we've established. It's, it's worked well, but the pool was built in the 70s, I believe.
1976.
So it's time for a facelift, and I think these dollars are being invested wisely because they'll preserve, I think, an amenity that everybody that wants to avail themselves of is there, and there is a diving facility there that is kind of second to none from an outs, from an outdoor perspective, so it is an investment, and I think that it's a good investment for the city, and the Finance Committee had a pretty robust discussion about it, but I think it's money well spent, so thanks for all the efforts that you're putting forth and your team, and I'm sure that we'll continue to hear from you on a going-forward basis. The other thing I will say is, the Friends are going to make some season passes available for the Noblesville Youth Assistance Program that I think is part of the partnership. It's just a way to try to help some of those folks that might not otherwise be able to make themselves, or make that available to themselves, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
I just had one. The 500K, based on what you're looking at, what you're trying to get done, simply, is it enough? Are you taking things off the agenda, or are the itemized lists that you'd rather be able to do, or?
We are. It's a step in the right direction, but it is only a first step in this direction. It will get a lot of immediate needs shored up, but to truly make this facility sustainable for the future, we'll take additional investment.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance 06-02-20 on February 25th.
Second.
We need a hand vote to establish a public hearing for ordinance 06-02-20. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Ares. Thank you. On to miscellaneous number one. Council to consider resolution number RC-1-20, a resolution adopting the 2020 Noblesville Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Reed.
Yes, I did make it.
Yes, you did.
Have a sick kiddo, so you never know these days. Good evening. Once again, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for taking the time to review this document, provide all of your input, talk to constituents, and attend meetings. As you're all aware, this process has strategically spanned two administrations, and we're proud of the results that this two-plus years of community consensus building has brought us to, and all the public input that went into it. This document we plan to use, and that will serve us well into the future. Each of you received an updated copy of the plan with amended future land use map and a worksheet, or as I like to call it, the cheat sheet, that identifies the public input and comments that were recommended to be changed, and how those were addressed in the plan. The consultant team from HWC, Corey Daley and Chris Hamm, are in the audience tonight. They're available to answer any specific questions you have about the plan, the update itself, or even the process. Obviously, I can help answer those questions as well. Just a reminder, this comp plan had a public hearing at the Plan Commission on January 21st. Comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation. However, tonight is before you for a vote as amended, so you have the amendments in front of you. That means it'll go back to the Plan Commission next week, a week from today, on the 18th, to get recertified, and then it'll technically be adopted at that point. And then it'll technically be adopted at that point. Whenever there's changes at a council level, it goes back to the Plan Commission for their thumbs up and approval. So that's it for me. If you have any questions of me or if you have questions of the consultant.
Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Boyce.
I don't really have a question, but Ms. Reed, I just wanted to say that I think probably I have been more critical than any current or past council member of our planning process and the way we've done it in the past. And so I'm excited. I think this is a move in the right direction, and I hope that it makes things better. I think that we were definitely in need of something, and so I'm excited about hopefully moving it forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
How long did you hear that for that?
I would like to thank Ms. Reed and the consultant. I did have several issues that I had some issues and concerns about for our community, and they addressed pretty much all of them. There's still a couple that are lingering. But I think the key to that little comp plan, it's a revolving document. It's going to be around for 10 years. We can amend it. We can change it. We can do whatever we need to do to make it work. And this is kind of a roadmap, but we still have the flexibility to get the best product we can in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Ares.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters.
In addition to the council comments, which were pretty extensive, you know, the public comments came in, and they were coming in as, I think they're still coming in. But the time with which the consultants and the planning department responded was amazing. And to see it this easy to read and easy to sort through, and here it is, here it is, it made it very easy to see the comments, and you could see the change in the policy that went on in there. It was very easy to do. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters.
President, I would just, I'd like to add dovetail to that, that one of the things that I find very attractive about this is there are action steps, and there is an actual roadmap to following what are we doing? Are we doing it? And if we're not doing it, why aren't we doing it? So I think it holds everybody accountable for what it is, what is in this plan. So I guess I will just comment that we need to be thoughtful about that and make sure that we track it. And I don't think this will end up on the shelf. But there's a lot here, so there's quite a bit to try to keep track of, and that's going to be a challenge for Ms. Reed and her staff. But we want to make sure that we use it. It's been quite an investment. But it's a good working document, and I think it'll serve us well.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a list checker, so if I don't have a box to check, then.
Checklist.
It's hopeful. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, would make a motion to approve the 2020 Noblesville Comprehensive Plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry.
So I need a motion to amend RC-1-20.
I would make that motion to amend RC-1-20.
I'll second that.
Hand vote on this? Okay, we need a hand vote on the amendment for RC-1-20. All those in favor, raise your right. Now, as amended, correct? We need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2020 Noblesville Comprehensive Plan as amended.
Second. We have a motion, we're in a second, to approve as amended. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, great. John. Moving on to miscellaneous number two. Counsel to consider resolution number RC-3-20, a resolution authorizing appropriation transfers for certain routine budget adjustments. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller. And what you have before you is a resolution that's essentially a proposal to try to, you know, address, simultaneously address two important goals. One is to, you know, help work on process efficiency, and the other one is to maintain transparency about what we do. And stealing a turn of phrase from another government agency from years ago, trying to make sure that, you know, government can operate at the speed of business. There are a lot of things that departments are doing, working with, you know, various vendors, establishing contractual relationships, that type of thing, that, you know, require funding to be in place, which is what you want, and you authorize the budget for that. And occasionally, though, we run into a circumstance where a department has the funding they need in their budget, but it's just not exactly in the right spot in the budget based on the requirements established with the various categories that we appropriate funds to. So what this authorization is, is for my office, Office of Finance and Accounting, for certain small routine transfers that are, don't represent any change in plan or what we're going to do or direction, that are underneath the threshold specified in this ordinance, that we can make those budget adjustments, have then the departments move forward, execute their business operational goals, and then report these adjustments to you on a quarterly basis. And it's very similar to a reporting that you'll see coming up in another agenda item that was for year-end 2020. So basically, what this is doing is extending that idea to now doing a similar type of thing throughout the year. And it was discussed fairly extensively across two finance committee meetings. So if you have any questions.
Mr. Peterson.
As Mr. Boyce confessed on the last item, I was the biggest critic of this. And I really appreciate that we seem to have made a pretty good compromise and accomplish government efficiency but not lose fiscal control. And I appreciate how we got this worked out. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve resolution RC-3-20, authorizing appropriation transfer for certain routine budget adjustments.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving RC-3-20, raise your right hand. Thank you. Sam here tonight, or is this? Oh, there he is, back there. Moving to, if I can keep track of this. This is number three. Yeah, this is counsel to consider receipt of summary of fiscally neutral year-end appropriations pursuant to resolution number RC-15-19. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, council members. This item is a report summarizing post-year-end appropriation transfers that our office has initiated to close out the 2019 fiscal year. As most of you will remember, and as we've mentioned before, towards the end of last year, council approved a resolution authorizing our office to make small transfers, small appropriation transfers of under $50,000 that are fiscally neutral in order to make sure that at the end of the year, there's sufficient appropriation authority in every expense series of every department to have each fund be balanced. We have initiated those transfers, and they're summarized here in your books. They're pretty much all small and technical in nature. For those that are $5,000 or more, we've left a comment basically describing very briefly what that item was. If you have any questions about any of those transfers specifically, either now or later, I'd be happy to answer those, but I'm not going to go into each one of them individually here. So.
Any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. President. We reviewed these at the finance committee meeting, and they all seemingly lined up well, and we got our answers. So we came forward with a favorable recommendation from the finance committee.
Thank you. There's no action taken on this, so thank you. We'll move on to number four. Counsel to consider receipt of expired warrants pursuant to IC-5-11, 10.5, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019. Ms. Trexler.
Good evening, council. Heather Trexler, Chief Accountant. Basically, this is something that we do every year. When the city of Noblesville issues a check or a warrant, it is good for two years from the date of issue. So we basically clean up at the end of every year any checks that are uncashed, and we do void those and put those back into the general fund or wherever they were originally written from.
As simple as that? Any questions? No questions? Okay, so you're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We all checked to make sure names weren't on any of those.
Did you? Okay, thank you.
I looked.
There's no vote on this, right, Ms. Lee's? Okay, so we're just moving on to transfer number one.
Number five.
Ah, number five. Yes, I knew there was something out here. I'm sorry. Number five. Counsel to consider resolution-RC, numbered RC-4-20, a resolution authorizing encumbrance carry forward from the 2019 budget year. Again, Ms. Trexler.
Good evening. On December 3rd, excuse me, on December 3rd, we brought before council a list of appropriations that we, encumbrances that we wanted to bring forward from 2019 to 2020. At the end of the year and the closeout, that number has went down a little bit. It originally started at $4,977, and it ended up closing at $4,661. These were, the changes were because we either finished the contract before the end of the year, or the department did not have enough appropriation to encumber, so we did lower the appropriation so that, or the encumbrance so that the appropriation stayed in the positive.
Thank you. Any questions? Do you vote on this one, correct?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve miscellaneous number five, resolution number RC-4-20, a resolution authorizing encumbrance carry forward from the 2019 budget.
Second. Motion and a second. This is again a hand vote. All those in favor of approving resolution RC-40-20, please raise your right hand. Ares. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Trexler. Now, it's transfers. Number one. Counsel to consider transfer number TA-05-20, an appropriation transfer in the Cumulative Capital Development Fund to fund replacement emergency warning sirens. Mr. Barris.
Sam Barris, OFA staff. Council members, as stated, this transfer resolution relates to the funding of $130,000 to replace five tornado warning sirens for the city of Noblesville. The funding mechanism for those siren replacements is to make an appropriation transfer of $65,000 each from the police and fire departments. That funding was originally budgeted to those two departments to pay for the cost of the countywide radio lease program for 2020. But since the time of adoption of the budget, the county is going to take on the cost of that program as a result of the new public safety lit, so those funds have been freed up for another purpose. This transfer resolution reallocates them to fund the warning siren replacement. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve transfer number one, TA-05-20.
Second. Motion and a second. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving to transfer number two. Counsel to consider transfer number TA-06-20, an appropriation transfer in the general fund to realign appropriations for other operational costs as part of a senior staff restructuring. Mr. Barris.
Thank you. Council members, these next two transfer resolutions are related, and it's easier to talk about them in one go-round, so I don't know.
Yeah, oh, read the next one. Okay. Transfer number three. Counsel to consider transfer number TA-07-20, an appropriations transfer in the Cumulative Capital Development Fund to realign appropriations for other operational costs as part of a senior staff restructuring. Mr. Barris.
Thanks. So both of these resolutions are related to, as stated in the title, the restructuring of staff positions, administrative positions within the executive. So the council has already approved fiscal actions at the previous council meeting relating to moving around 100-series appropriation for salaries and benefits for those positions. This resolution cleans up some funding issues related to other expenses related to those positions, so office supplies, furniture, contract spending, membership, stuff like that, vehicle leases. So this puts that, those, that funding in the correct part of the budget, the mayor's office, and to support that, the position changes. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Connor.
I would make, I would move that we approve transfer TA-06-20, appropriation transfer for senior staff restructuring.
Voting separately? Can we put them together? Go ahead and read the next part, too.
Then I'll make, I'll move that we approve transfer TA-07-20, operational costs as a part of senior staff restructuring.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Both motions carry. Thank you. Transfer number four. Counsel to consider transfer number TA-08-20, an appropriation transfer in the general fund to realign appropriations within the Information Technology Department for transition to consultant services for department administration. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, council members. So as some of you will recall, back in November of last year, the city switched to having its IT services provided. So now we are having consulting firms, Santi Solutions, provide the city with those services. And at that time, council adopted a fiscal action to fund that contract through the rest of the calendar year 2019. However, all of those changes occurred after the adoption of the 2020 budget. So currently, the budget does not contemplate the fact that that contract was going to be paid out of the 300-series. But at the same time, there are three positions within the department that are no longer on that department's payroll, freeing up some resources. So what this resolution does is it moves appropriation authority from series that no longer need it, so about $300,000 from the 100-series and another about $100,000 from the 400-series for equipment, to the 300-series where that contract is going to be paid from. And just because these savings have already been identified at this point in the year, we thought we'd go ahead and bring this resolution forward so that we at least have those things in the correct place. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Connor.
I would move that we approve transfer TA-08-20, transition to consulting services for department administration.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Transfer number five. Counsel to consider transfer TA-09-20, an appropriation transfer in the general fund to realign appropriations for position reclassification in the police department. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, council members. So once again, these next two transfer resolutions are both related to the police department. So again, it would probably be easiest to discuss them in one, at one time.
I will read then number six. Counsel to consider transfer number TA-10-20, an appropriation transfer in the general fund to realign appropriations within the police department for a transition from a quartermaster system to a clothing stiven for police officers.
Thank you, members. So TA-09-20 and TA-10-20 both deal with the police department, two separate issues. The first, based on their discussions going into 2020 with the new chief, new public safety director, there's a couple changes they've determined would be beneficial for the department going forward. The first of which is to have an additional deputy chief position. That is accomplished by restructuring an existing lieutenant position within the department. That does result in a pay differential of about $8,000. So this first one, TA-09-20, moves appropriation authority from general fund contingency to the police department for that purpose. The second item relates to how clothing and supplies are procured for officers. So currently, there's essentially a quartermaster system whereby officers can put in a request to have an item purchased through the department. So those expenses- So, those expenses are currently budgeted as 200-series supplies. What the police department is seeking to do is instead essentially provide each officer with a clothing stipend of $800, so they can go out and get the things that they need on their own, and they believe this will save time and be a more efficient process. It's a fiscally neutral action, but it does result in moving appropriation authority from the 200-series to the 100-series, since it would now essentially be part of their pay because it's a stipend. So, that's what those two actions are, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions at all? Is there a motion? We're going to do these all together, so I need a motion that encompasses both transfers.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wilds.
I would make a motion, I move to, that we approve transfer number TA-09-20, appropriation transfer from the general fund and realignment appropriation for position reclassification in the police department, as well as transfer number TA-10-20, transfer in the general fund to realign appropriations in the department for transition from the quartermaster system to a clothing stipend.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of approving both five and six, the transfers, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, transfer number seven. Counsel to consider transfer number TC-01-20, a cash transfer from the rainy day fund to the parks and recreation fund. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and quite an exhaustive list of transfers here this evening. And the, I will draw one distinction here. You will notice that this is a cash transfer, not an appropriation transfer, and these are, you know, less common. The appropriation transfer is where you're transferring around authority to spend funds. This is actually moving cash from one fund to another fund, and it's actually linked to the earlier ordinance, additional appropriation ordinance for the grant to Friends of Central Pool. And basically, what's happening here and the reason this is required in this case is since that is a, an issue that has arisen since the budget was adopted in, you know, October of 2020, the expenditure here is appropriately associated with parks and parks department and parks fund, so we want to have that expense associated with the appropriate portion of the budget, but at the time that budget was adopted, that wasn't contemplated, and so therefore, the revenue flowing into the parks fund didn't support that at the time of the budget. So, this is addressing that administrative aspect of that change, is that we're now taking funding that is elsewhere in the budget for things like this, putting it into the proper place so that it will support the appropriation that you are moving forward on. And then the last thing I'll mention about this, too, that ties in is this is an, you know, an important priority of the administration, too, that this is an important investment in the, a key asset, and so this will support that other action. Any questions? Happy to take.
Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Spalding, the only thing I'd add on is also, just so nobody thinks this is coming from the rainy day and we're pulling it, it is coming from the rainy day now, but we are planning on the upcoming parks bond, using that to refund in the rainy day portion, correct?
That is certainly a possibility.
Okay.
You know, so...
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. President, I would just make a comment that the, when you're down to trying to figure out where you're going to put the dollars, the perks, and to Mr. Spalding's credit, we're trying to put these dollars in spots where they will make logical sense going forward so that Parks and Rec will be basically, this will be in their budget so that we can track it for data quality going forward, and so that was, I mean, obviously, it's kind of like makes sense, right? But in the past, there's been some things in different spots that make it difficult to do forecasting, so we want to get the data in the right spots. So, a lot of the transfers you see are, to some degree, related to that because we want data integrity so we can do a better job of what we're looking at going forward, because the mayor has a lot of plans, so we need to be able to figure out where we're going to come up with the dollars. So, just a comment, I appreciate the work that you're doing to make that happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or do we have...
You need a motion?
We do.
I move that we approve transfer TC-01-20, a cash transfer from the rainy day fund to the parks and recreation fund.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of transfer TC-01-20, please raise your right hand. Spalding, Mr. Barris, both, thank you, Ms. Trexler, for all the work on all that tonight. You guys were busy. Council comments, I just had one real quick before you guys chime in, is to congratulate our mayor, Mayor Jensen, on the distinction of the IBJ's 40 Under 40 honor, so congratulations on that distinction. Well-earned. Yeah, Mr. Ares.
I thought maybe you were going to give a Girl Scout cookie promotion. Isn't it Girl Scout Cookie Month?
I think it is. Mr. Boyce has some right here.
There we go. Not anymore, but Jenna is right out there. She is Girl Scout and Boy Scout, so she can definitely take your orders.
So, you can sell them here tonight?
We have some in our car.
You're going to do this transaction...
Yeah. Any other comments? Mr. Smith.
I just wanted to thank the police chief and the public safety director for coming this morning to Noblesville Main Street, had a downtown merchant summit, and it really, there were multiple business leaders that said it meant a lot for you guys to be there, so I appreciate you guys coming out for that.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.